Fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, Twalton City Council work session. Uh, we have two items on the agenda tonight, a Twalton Moving Forward quarterly report, and then our council meeting, Agenda Review Communications and Roundtable. So let's hand it off to, I'm assuming Jeff and Megan for the quarterly report for Twalton Moving Forward.
All right. Good evening. Um, so I Megan's gonna be most of the talking tonight, but um, I couldn't let a council meeting in a quarterly report go by without saying something. Uh, so every time we talk about this uh, program, it's super fun, super exciting. Um, I will say the public outreach piece is one of my favorite pieces because it, it just feels like it's going so well with the community and we're like interacting with people and uh, so it's awesome. Um, so I did have a couple of things to report that are not in the PowerPoint real quick. Um, so on June twenty-eight, so in almost exactly two weeks, Garden Corner Curves, we're gonna close the road out there. Uh, so we just wanted to give everybody a heads up. Um, that's to allow the contractor to come in and uh, take out that culvert and replace it with what's called a box culvert, which looks like a little bridge. Um, and that's probably gonna be closed, we're, we're saying right now into October. Um, and so uh, there's a bunch of work that goes along with moving that culvert out of the way, including some PGE work, some gas line work, and some utility work, and just a lot of stuff, so. Uh, so you'll start seeing um, some public information uh, going out that might have already gone out. Um, Megan, yeah. So that's, that's coming up. And then um, on consent agenda tonight is uh, a big project, so Martin Aziz Sager. So that's the uh, the signal to sort of replace our Keystone Cop intersection and make that function um, way better. So that's super exciting. And I will also just uh, report that the bids came in really close to the engineer's estimate. Uh, so we were really, really happy. You never know when you bid a project how uh, how volatile the market's gonna be and. Uh, so to not jinx the rest of the program, I won't say much more, but I will say on this one, we were very happy uh, with the bids, yeah. So, and with that, oh, and one last thing, eleven, we're gonna be doing eleven construction projects this summer. So you're gonna see construction all over town, so that's super cool. And then I will hand it off to Megan.
Yeah, thanks, Jeff. I'll go ahead and share my screen. All right. So um, as with previous quarterly updates, tonight's presentation will highlight recent developments on a few projects and some program components. Um, unlike in previous updates, we're providing a closer look at our community engagement efforts and strategies this year. Um, one of the capstone pieces of that, of course, is our Neighborhood Traffic Safety Program, which is currently in its solicitation period, so I'll include a quick update on that. And then two reminders for you all. One, of course, is that our fourth annual report will be coming out this fall slash winter. And I'm, it doesn't feel correct, but I'm pretty sure it's the fourth one. Um, and then, of course, you can always find updated information about the bond program and project-specific updates in particular on our website, twaltonmovingforward.com. So, community engagement is a fundamental part of the bond program. It's a fundamental part of how the city does business in general. Um, for the bond program, it not only informs the design of projects, but it was also intentionally incorporated into project selection through our Neighborhood Traffic Safety Program. It was also a key piece of many of our key projects, like the Garden Corner Curves, of course. Um, many of our existing engagement strategies relied on face-to-face or in-person engagement. Um, so we were forced to ask ourselves, is public participation in a pandemic possible? And we said that four times really fast, all in a row, and we decided, of course, it's possible. So as Sherilyn's quote says right there, um, we had to experiment, we had to try new things, and we had to be creative. So the bond program responded to the pandemic in much the same way that the city did and other organizations did. We took a couple of weeks to pause and take a look at our operations and our safety measures. Um, we reviewed the health recommendations, uh, and then once we had done all those things, we, we continued, we proceeded. Um, as evident by the number of construction projects that happened last summer, it didn't slow us down much. Um, so in addition to our construction, our public outreach also continued. Nick, one of the reasons why it was able to continue um, was because of our really strong program. Um, so our, our really strong team. So pictured above is a group that we call T3, or our Twalton Transportation Team. It's a combination of staff and our consultants who work on the bond program. And we meet every two weeks, and there's a few special guests, which you'll notice in the upper left and right-hand corners of the screen. Um, so this team works really closely together on all different aspects of the bond program. Um, Alta Planning and Design, which I think you all have heard from before, handles our public outreach for project-specific information. And then we've got Barney and Worth on board that helps with our um, program-wide communication efforts as well. And so through the efforts of this team, we're able, we were able to still move forward throughout the bond program. Um, public engagement, of course, is super dependent on the project and the project's location. Um, so we design each public engagement plan depending on those two factors. Um, there are a lot of similarities, but there are a lot of differences as well, and we wanna make sure that we capture that in our outreach techniques. So this is a slide that should look fairly familiar. We've used it in previous presentations. Um, and the reason we keep coming back to it is because it cleanly demonstrates all of the different ways that we can conduct public outreach, even in a pandemic. So on the left-hand side, you see all of those different options that we've been doing now over the past year and a half, um, plus a few items that we've done before and we hope to do again someday. We layer our communication approach, often employing multiple strategies, because we've got a diverse community and people are reached in different ways. And sometimes it takes two or three pings before somebody is officially reached um, and takes action, whether that's responding to a survey, um, or really informing themselves about a project or submitting a project suggestion online. Um, so we use, we use multiple different strategies for each project, for the most part. Um, to the greatest extent possible, we provide our communication materials in both English and Spanish. So you can see in the top-left corner, that looks like a postcard that was in English. Next to it is what looks like a yard sign in Spanish. Most of our printed materials are two-sided, one in English and one in Spanish. Um, and this is really important because we've got a large portion of our community that's bilingual or Spanish-speaking only, and we wanna make sure that the program is just as accessible for them as it is for English-speaking communities. So, this next slide includes a list of some of the things that we either did for the first time this year or we did a little bit differently. So I'll touch on a few of those. So one, um, which is a prominent one, is we've taken advice from the Twalatinos, formerly known as the Diversity Task Course. So on a number of occasions over the past year, we've met with them about a specific project and said, here's basically what the project is, here's what we're looking to do, this is the type of information we're looking for from the community. What do you recommend? How can we reach out to people who live around this area or your neighbors or the folks down the street? Um, they provided us advice, and then we incorporated that ice into our public outreach plan for those projects. Um, so that's been a really crucial avenue for us to conduct engagement in ways that we haven't, haven't done before. Um, we also used gift cards to incentivize um, survey responses. We use both twenty-five gift cards to Fred Meyer and a hundred-dollar gift cards to Fred Meyer. Um, this is probably not a surprise, but as it turns out, um, incentives are uh, tangible incentives are motivating for folks. Um, crosswalks are great, but Fred Meyer gift cards can sometimes be even more appetizing. So, um, those are really successful at driving out turnout. And you've seen our yard signs throughout the entire bond program announcing that there's a project near you. We've also used them to encourage participation in surveys and ask people to submit a project suggestion online and provide other types of specific information. And you've probably also seen our social media posts. Um, I hesitate to say this, but Nextdoor has actually been really helpful. Um, one of the great pieces of Nextdoor is that you can provide a message tailored to the specific neighborhood, rather than blasting it to the whole community, um, which has been great as we're looking for specific feedback. We've also used text messages, um, both to provide updates on projects to individuals who have reached out with questions, to remind people that there's a meeting coming up that they might wanna attend, and um, to provide survey responses. And I've got a slide a little bit later that'll talk more about that, as well as the sidewalk sticker survey. Um, a lot of those techniques rely on people having an existing connection to the project or to us, whether that's following our social media pages or walking by the location that the project happens to be. Um, one of the ways that we've kind of increased participation with folks that maybe didn't happen upon one of those other ways is by sending out postcards and letters. Uh, so this slide right here is intended to show you the vast amount of postcards and letters that we've sent out this past year. So we send out mailings to tell people that there's a project near you going to construction. We send out postcards or surveys or mailings to tell people that there's a survey coming up. Um, we send general information via mail. This has been a way to make sure that we at least get it into your inbox, whether or not you throw it away immediately, as I do with some of the mail I receive, or you maybe glance at the first couple of sentences, but throw it away after that point, or maybe you read it all the way through, which I'm sure all of you do. So anyways, this has been an effective way to reach out to a lot of people. Uh, so I think you're all familiar, or most of you are familiar with our Community Engagement Corner, Betsy Rodriguez-Rufe, who's pictured there. Um, she's up on the agenda a little bit later this evening, so I won't give away too much or spoil any of her talking points. But I do wanna acknowledge the work that she's done on the program, particularly with our outreach to our Spanish-speaking community. Um, so you can see her quote, she references the Twalatinos Group, which we've met with multiple times, the most recent of which was, of course, a couple of weeks ago. Um, but this has been a really important component of our program. Betsy's work there has been amazing. So a lot of the ways that we've been able to engage this past year have been high-tech. We've used surveys, we've used Zoom calls, that type of thing. But throughout that, we've also wanted to make sure that we had a personal touch or a personal connection with people as well. Um, so I've got two examples on the slide there. One on the left is for our Ninety-Fifth and Avery Project. We had some specific questions about Ninety-third. I think if I recall correctly, it had to do with parking. And we wanted to find out from folks who lived in apartments around that area, as well as people who lived directly on that street. So we were able to use really specific outreach, um, using a survey to get feedback on that area. So I think we had flyers, we put on windshields, we had yard signs, we had postcards mailed to the apartments. And through that outreach, we were able to get a hundred and forty-eight respondents who ranked different solutions for that project, which ultimately, we're pretty confident that they were from that area because our outreach was so specific. Um, so that was a big win for us. The other example on the slide is a screenshot from a recent Twalatinos meeting where they were talking about the Neighborhood Traffic Safety Program. So you can see Betsy in the top center and then Adrian from Alta Planning and Design, also in the top center. Um, so in addition to meeting with the Twalatinos via virtual meetings, we've also spent time talking to parent-teacher organization groups about various projects. We've met with the CIOs of, on a number of occasions. And we've also held our own informational sessions or open houses for various projects to share information with the community. Um, so one of our goals in our public outreach has been to build relationships or to build on relationships. And so maintaining this personal touch, even though we're using a lot of technology, has been crucial to our, our communication strategy. All right, so this is one that I mentioned earlier on a slide. It's one of my favorites. Um, so this is our Sixty-Fifth Avenue near Meridian Park Hospital. Um, so this project, for those who are familiar with the area, it's building a crosswalk that'll connect some apartments and a bus stop with a hospital across the street. If you've walked down there, um, it's quite loud, there's a lot of cars, the sidewalk's a little narrow. So this sidewalk is gonna provide, or excuse me, this crosswalk is gonna provide some much-needed access. Um, you can see Uma, Jeff, and Mike in descending order or ascending order there on the screen. Um, and we did two things with this project. So the first, we used an online interactive map to find out where potential crossing locations could be. So people were able to log on, and I believe they dropped a pin on the map where they thought a crosswalk might be a good fit. And they commented on those and provided other feedback. Through that survey, we were able to narrow it down to two possible locations. And then, as you can see pictured here, we used a different technique to figure out whether option A or option B would be preferable. So the two options were fairly close together, and so it was important to us to make sure that people knew exactly what we were talking about. And so we used the stickers, which are, they're literally stickers that you put on the sidewalk. They last for about two to three weeks, to indicate this is exactly where the crosswalk would go if you pick option A. This is exactly where the crosswalk would go if you pick option B. Um, we also used a text survey format, so people could respond right there from their phone, as opposed to needing to jotting down the web address or using their smartphone to respond to it right there. And so that was able to help us figure out whether we wanted to go with option A or B. All right, so one of the great things about surveys, in whatever format they are, is that you have the ability to ask really simple questions, like, do you want option A or do you want option B? But also more sophisticated and complicated questions. Um, so a couple of the surveys highlighted here had a little bit more complicated feedback. Um, so Boon's Ferry Road Sidewalk and cycling corridor project is a project that's happens over a quarter, and there's a lot of different project elements to it. And we wanted feedback on all of those project elements. And so we were able to effectively gather that feedback through the survey. Um, also, there was a large number of people who responded, so it provides an opportunity to get a lot of input from all of them. So we've used surveys throughout the interview. All right, I'm getting close to the end here. So, um, at our last quarterly update, we talked about the Neighborhood Traffic Safety Program. We are now in month three of three of our solicitation period. Suggestions are due by June thirtieth. Um, last year, through our outreach, we gathered a ton of different suggestions, many of which are still viable projects. And so you can see the slide indicates that we've got about fifty that we'll roll over and consider this next year. Um, at an upcoming presentation, I'm sure the, the bond team will be here to talk about the different suggestions that came in this year and how we might approach deciding which projects go to construction next summer. Of course, the projects that you reviewed last summer are getting ready to get started this summer. I think we've got five or six. And, um, I know we've included this in every single presentation we've had. It's really easy. All you have to do is log onto our website and click the green button right in the middle of the screen and submit your project suggestion there. So we encourage you and everybody else to do that by January. With that, I'll stop sharing my screen, and Jeff and I are available for questions.
Questions for Megan or Jeff? Valerie?
No question, but great job on the public outreach. I love to see all the, um, that we're really getting input from our community. It's great.
Other questions, comments? Counsel Brooks?
My Counselor Pratt, I just wanna give a shout-out. I think, um, it's kind of almost a magic trick during COVID to be able to reach out to our community and the way that, um, there's been so many efforts and, um, trying very hard not to leave people out, especially our Spanish-speaking residents, is really impressive. And, um, I know that as we open up, one of the things that will always stay ever-important to our residents is our transportation plans and how we're doing on this. And so it's, it's been really nice. And I think it's great, too, that, um, that even though there's gonna be a lot of projects, it's at least during a time that's been a little quieter on the roads and has a little less impact as we, I know in our community, I'll wanna keep moving forward. Thanks.
Other comments? President Grimes?
Hello. Um, yeah, along the lines of Counselor Brooks and Counselor Pratt, um, I just wanted to compliment our staff. Um, they've just done such an outstanding job of not only managing the projects and using the feedback from the community to manage and focus the project, but to be able to have that kind of community outreach and that kind of success in reaching and getting feedback from the community during such a horrible time. It's just, I've never felt to be impressed. And this particular bond program, the way that it's been managed, I've always said it's sort of like the gold standard for projects. Um, and I just think from beginning to end, it's just fantastic. So, um, just my compliments and keep things going. And if there's ever anything that, as individual counselors, we can do to help either reach out to communities or constituencies, um, I'm all about helping, and I just compliment you guys for a job well done. And thank you. And thank Uma. She's a great, great mascot and figurehead for this. I love it. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Uh, the only, the only thing I'd say, I loved that idea of the A and B. I thought that was totally ingenious and creative. I saw it on the ground. I drove by there. I thought it was for people who were map-challenged or just happened to be there at the right time, right place, and saw it. It was a great way to get feedback. So kudos to you guys for thinking that up and making it happen, 'cause I've never seen that before. So, uh, as Sherilyn mentioned, and Megan mentioned in the very beginning, it was super creative. You were thinking outside the box. And, uh, I thank you for that. So, anything else? All right, well, thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you.
I see both of you later on, so. All right, so moving on to item two on the agenda is our City Council Agenda Review Communications and Roundtable. So, uh, tonight, we've footed on full circle on counselors. So on the pledge, uh, Maria is up to do the pledge of allegiance. There's Maria, all right. And then, um, the proclamation, I'm assuming, is that could be Counselor Brooks or Counselor Pratt? Counselor Brooks, I figured. All right. Uh, and then, let's see, any questions on the consent agenda? All right, no, everyone shaking their head no, all right. So with that, we'll start our council roundtable, uh, the current events. And as usual, Cindy is right next to me, so. Even in, even in chamber events, Cindy seems to be popping up next to me. So Counselor Hillary, you're up first.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess that, uh, says a lot about both of us, right? Good evening, everyone. So first, I'd like to say a huge congratulations to the graduates of Twalton High School, Tigard High School, and Creekside Community High School and their support systems. You did it. What a crazy year. And, um, it's been fun to watch from the sidelines and cheer you on. So congratulations. Um, on June twelfth, I attended, um, Rep. Prusak, Rep. Salinas, and Senator Wagner's coffee conversation, um, to hear a little bit more about the priorities um, that they're looking at for the ARPA funds that are coming into the state and other things that they're looking at. So that was a great roundtable. Um, then, the week before, sorry, I attended, um, the Washington County Youth Substance Use Prevention Collaborative, and they're working towards finalizing their charter, the language with that, and then digging in to the work that they have ahead of them. And today, I attended, as part of the Washington County Community Health Improvement Plan, um, a subgroup on anti-oppressive data, and our focus today was really fascinating. It was on a toolkit for, um, alleviating racial equity, um, through data integration. So it was just really interesting in how we make questions and interpret them and, and share them out. So, um, that is all I have.
Thank you. Uh, shifting over, Counselor Pratt.
Hello. Um, I attended the, um, C4, um, Clackamas County Coordinated Committee, and we talked about, um, STIP, State Transportation Improvement Plan, and got a legislative update. And the two things I got out of that transportation-related were that, um, they said that tolling can be used, this question was asked, for off-interstate. So when we have people going off the roads because of tolling, those funds can be used to help improve the roads that they're all gonna offload onto. And then the other was that, um, there's House Bill three zero five five, which I just looked up, was in the, it's now in the Ways and Means Committee, 'cause there's only two weeks left, I believe, for the legislative session. So I don't know how far that will get, but it would allow that one-cent gas tax dollar to be, um, a more flexible, so that could mean funding could go more quickly to the Abernathy Bridge and movement. That's all I have.
Counselor Brooks?
Well, hey, everybody. Um, congratulations to graduates, of course, and also, um, a thank you to the Budget Committee for all the work on our budget, which I thought went really well and smoothly so far. Um, I attended the Regional, uh, Water Providers Consortium, uh, this month. And there were quite, it was, it was a very interesting meeting. This, this group meets just quarterly. Um, there are new updates in communication on our website. One about for kids getting engaged in being a leak detective in the home. And the other is water by the numbers, and those are two image graphics that we should probably be linked up to on our website. And, um, a lot of the meeting was a panel that was discussing how the regional providers came together, even though it's been a long time now, uh, during the ice storm, to make sure that drinking water stayed available for Lake Oswego. And that was an incredible story of collaboration. And just really a reminder, even though it's not quite directly our same water source, a reminder of why the consortium's so important and why working together regionally and our collaborative efforts, um, really help our resiliency, especially in times that are, um, challenging. And I've seen this twice now, once with the ice storm and with the fires, and just the heroic efforts that people go to. Um, it's incredible. So, a big thank you to all the staff around the region and the way that people collaborated, sharing generators and, you know, getting people to hook things up that aren't supposed to be hooked up and making things happen with thirty-five cords and things that you just can't explain in, um, a five-minute upgrade, update. And, and then, the other thing that was interesting during that, um, meeting was that there was an update from the, um, I forget the name of the organization, NOAA, around, uh, the drought conditions. We were projecting better numbers in February, and now our region looks like it's gonna be in severe drought. And there's two rivers that are, there's five rivers that are at, um, sort of in distress, and two of our rivers are at record-low, historic-low levels, including the Clackamas River. So, um, so being mindful around conservation of water is a really important thing and helps our resiliency, not just for our city, which is a good thing, but for the whole region. So, um, I just wanna remind people about that. And June is Water Preparedness Month, so, um, anyway, so be thinking about how we're watering and also having storage of water, which I've talked about before. Um, and then, oh, and finally, there were elections, and I was elected as Chair of that consortium, which I'm super proud of because I'm the first female chair in the history of that consortium. So I was kind of surprised by that, and I was also really touched that, um, I was nominated, that I was encouraged to run, and that I was elected unanimously. And I'm really looking forward to bringing Twal, being Twalton Forward and celebrating all the work that Jeff Fox has done in our, uh, work towards our renewal of our contract. And it's just, I think it's a special time, especially because of all the work that our city leadership has been doing in the consortium arena. Is that fair to say? Um, so, and, so it makes it easy. Thank you, Jeff and Nick. Um, and then finally, I was at the PAB meeting, and some of the money is going towards a program for homeless people, a shower trailer. So it's a new program. It's funded by, uh, community development block grant dollars. There were, there's only one applicant, so we'll be still doing the Zoom grant applicant that's not finalized yet. But just so people know, there is going to be a resource for homeless people, especially during this time of COVID, to be able to take showers and, um, get cleaned up in Washington County. So that's a new thing, and I'll let you know more about it as more is revealed. Thanks. Oh, yeah, I think that's, oh, we had the, also the committee advisory appointments. And, um, I just have to say, a lot of our appointments this time were reappointments, but the commitment to volunteerism by all of our citizens that engage in, um, the committees, city committees that we have, uh, it's just so impressive. And then I have to really give a shout-out to our youth. Um, we had two youth reappointments, and just the growth and maturity and confidence, I feel like they're gonna be my boss probably tomorrow, um, by the rate they're going. So it's just really, it does so much, not only for the community, but for the individual to participate. And I know everyone, um, on council understands that, but I think it's just really important to reiterate to the community when they're like, why do you do all this? And it's like, mate, you know, it's, uh, wonderful to watch people grow and develop and contribute in, with meaningful ways in their lives. So, um, anybody out there listening, please consider engaging with the committees. They're just really fabulous groups of people and always fun to talk to everybody. Thanks.
You. Counsel Sacco?
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to say, um, a huge thank you to the Twalton Police Department for the ceremony, um, at Twalton High School this weekend. Um, they did a fabulous job directing traffic and making sure everybody was where they were supposed to be. Um, it went very traffic and making sure everybody was where they were supposed to be. It went very smooth, and they just did an awesome job. So I just wanted to say a huge shout out to them. Thank
Council Reyes?
Um, not much. Just that we, I was part of the committee, and Councilor Brooks just, you know, summarized everything. And I did with a lot of what she says. So, thank you.
Okay. Council President Grimes?
I'm just going to echo everyone's congratulations for our graduating class. So proud of them, and I'm so proud of the community that supports them. And also congratulate Councilor Brooks on her appointment. That's fantastic. Well-deserved. She's going to do a great job representing the city on that task force. And that's all I have to share tonight. It's a quiet night for me. Thank you, guys. I appreciate your work.
You. Got a few things here. Going back to May, so Greater Portland Inc., Small Cities Consortium, Metro gave their annual report of the housing bond update. And this is the one on the facility side, not to wrap around services. Things are going well. They're getting plans in for building facilities. One of them, of course, being the CEPOR facility here in Tualton. They are actually very happy. They're ahead of plan on getting units that have two or three bedrooms. Traditionally, those kind of facilities have one or two bedrooms, and that's it. But it was heard loud and clear from the folks who do this kind of housing that we need mobile bedroom units, and that's what are being proposed. That was good news. Moving into June, Greater Portland Inc., the Greater Portland Economic Development District Board meeting, they went over the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, the SEDS. That's pretty much in the process of being wrapped up. And now the task is, is how do you take this show on the road and bring the SEDS to city economic development people, to major manufacturers, major businesses, even small businesses in the Greater Portland area, and explain how this new economic development strategy impacts them and how they can help. So we're working that out. I was very happy to do my first ribbon cutting of the year at Lady Full Circle. This is the second store from a mother-in-law and daughter-in-law. They own the Ladybug Boutique in Bridgeport Village. They opened the second location. The Tualton Chamber of Commerce showed up in force for our first ribbon cutting of the year, and hopefully we'll have more soon. The mayor, the Washington County Mayor's Lunch was held on the 11th, the same day. Interesting conversations were about in-person council meetings. When would they return? The roundtable consensus was people are feeling about August. Other mayors were saying that's the plans they have right now, that their city councils will be physically in person again beginning in August, but with most of them also having a hybrid model, that folks who want to attend by Zoom still can do so. They're working out the details. I think Wilsonville's already had their first one. One city had a problem with feedback and sound issues, having Zoom in person and TVCTV broadcast at the same time. Mayor Fitzgerald in Wilsonville said they had no issues with that. The second thing we talked about was utility and water cutoffs. Some cities are still struggling to get funding for those folks who are struggling to pay for their utilities. The good news here is that community action has heard loud and clear that they need to answer the phones and be more responsive to folks who are calling for this utility assistance, and that they're adding additional phone lines and staff. So when people do call looking for those funds that are available to help pay for water and utility bills, that someone's there actually to answer the phone or follow up with a voicemail and help them get that funding. Per Sherlin, just as an update, we are not cutting anybody's water off. Neither is PGE or natural. We're guiding people to community action to help, you know, pay their water bills, so we don't have to do that. And then today was the Washington County Quartering Meeting. A couple, three things was, we had an update on the regional mobility policy update. And the focus of the next year or so was how to effectively, I'm going to remember what to say right, how to define mobility and how to measure it. And it's not just cars anymore. There's quite the discussion, how do you measure congestion? How do you manage your traffic time? So it's going to be an interesting way of relooking what mobility means in the metro region. The second thing we talked about was the regional flexible fundings allocation. Metro gets a chunk of money from the feds to allocate for flexible projects. We'll be looking at projects that can occur between 2025 and 2027. These project funds usually are for sidewalks, trails, and roads. So our technical staff, city staff, we've been working on that, and we'll be getting updates at the Washington County Consortium. I'm talking, I'm thinking Bridget, Washington County Coordinating Committee, and then J-PAC, NPAC, all, you know, the four-letter acronyms of all the meetings we have. And then finally, I emailed you all you heard about. Sadly, our Boonstury Active Transportation Corridor wasn't selected as one of the projects to move on for federal funding by Congresswoman Bonamici. She had nine projects to pick from. She picked, I believe, four or five. Of course, I was kind of disheartened. Sent an email immediately off when I learned of it. To her credit, I got a call back within 10 minutes from one of her staffers explaining how the rating was done. One of the things that came out of this is now, as you know, the five mayors of southeast Washington County meet monthly now. I'm going to start meeting again, that being Tigard, Tualton, Durham, King City, and Sherwood. The Congresswoman will be sending one of her representatives to join us at our lunches to hear more about East Washington County needs, because one of my complaints to her staff was basically Cornelius, Beaverton, and Hillsborough get all the love, and we don't get the love on this side of the county. And they heard that. I also requested that the five mayors have some time to meet with the Congresswoman during August recess, and they're going to get that on the calendar, so we can have a discussion with her in person versus staff. And that's all I have. Anything else for the good order tonight? All right. So we're done a little early. Yippee. So we'll go ahead and start back up at seven o'clock with our regular city council meeting. We'll see you all in about 22 minutes.